She's allowed to do what she wants. She's allowed to do what she wants.
Know what you're doing.
You're trying to bully people to do what you want them to do.
Listen, the bully is the one who accuses people of bullying.
That's the one who's beating up the person next to him.
Just relax.
Make the motion and I'll second it.
You're gonna get your motion, relax down there.
You're a bully.
We don't know a damn thing. We don't have a clue about anything. This is not about money.
We don't have an issue speeding in our school zones.
Run against me, you can sit up here.
This is all ludicrous.
Well, then let them speed.
Uh-huh. Speak, so relax. I don't know why you did this. This is on the motion to approve the ordinance on second reading.
Uh-huh.
Commissioner Cagiano?
Yes.
Commissioner Simone?
No.
Commissioner Sariam?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
No.
Mayor Razzano?
Hell no.
Join the rest of the show.
Now I'm gonna make, now I'm gonna make one. I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do what the city manager has suggested and table it for six months.
You've already, the ordinance has come. Yeah, the ordinance was, uh...
Oh, yeah.
Would you give her a laugh?
Alright, then I'm on the prevailing side.
That would be, that would be...
Yes.
Because he asked us to.
That would be... He asked you to do this.
She's allowed to do what she wants.
He asked you to do this.
She's allowed to do what she wants.
He made his suggestion.
She's allowed to do what she wants. Yeah, be quiet down there, be quiet down there. You can't even bully people to your...
It's bullying, Anthony. When you make a decision, you make a decision, but don't make a decision and say, you know what, I wanna change it.
You're bullying to your...
And don't say the city manager told you to do this.
I'm going, I'm going by what's in here.
It's not bullying, it's being real to the people.
If she wants to make another motion on the prevailing side, she's allowed to, then let her do it then.
She can do it, but what she's saying is the city manager told her to. And she wasn't the city manager.
I'm going by the suggestions that I got today from the city manager. You want me to read one?
You want to, that's the police chief that knows about this, or anybody else?
So, I mean, so what's your motion?
I would hope he has some input in this.
So what's your motion you'd like to make?
I was gonna bring it back and...
Knock yourself out. The, the motion, if I might...
What's your motion?
If I might, because the ordinance has already failed, you're on the prevailing side. You can make a motion to reconsider. Uh, that would be an appropriate motion to make. The tabling isn't an appropriate motion because the ordinance has already failed. You can always bring this up later on.
No, the ordinance didn't fail.
Yes, it did.
But that's...
So, there's nothing to stop the commission from bringing this ordinance back at a later date.
I thought you had to do it right away if you were on the prevailing.
Well, you might do a motion to reconsider, you can do a motion to reconsider. You can, David, but you don't have to.
You can if you want to. You're allowed to.
But if she wants to bring it back, you're allowed to. She can bring it back, just... Arlene?
You're allowed to bring it back if you want.
Anybody could bring this back if they wanted to.
If they're on the prevailing side.
That is not true. If you wanted to bring this back and amend the ordinance to bring it back to some, something, adding something in there, you can bring it back. You don't have to play the games up here and let people know, well, you can't bring it back because you're on whose side. It's not true, Anthony. You amend it and bring it back.
Could she, could she vote to bring it back and make a motion that this doesn't take effect for a certain amount of time?
That would be sadly what I was gonna do. And if we never, that we hold a workshop that was suggested, that we get more... I will read exactly what he said.
You can do that whenever you want. You can do that at this meeting, next meeting.
We don't do a workshop. People speeding, they should get a ticket.
I have the impression I have to go down.
You don't have to do this, you know. A, a, a motion to reconsider can be made at the same meeting where the item was considered, or the...
Can be.
Can be, or the next meeting.
But it's, alright, or the next meeting, but not any time after that.
Correct. And that would be a motion to reconsider the, the vote on second reading for this ordinance. That's what that would be.
So it would either be this week or next week? Because after, yes. Because he said I'll either this or the next meeting, he just said that.
This or the next meeting?
If, if... Hold, hold on, David, let me ask a question. You're telling me that if an ordinance doesn't pass and is not brought up the next meeting, it can never be brought back? No, that's not...
The prevailing side can't bring it back.
I'm just saying that to reconsider the vote on this ordinance that was made tonight. This, if you want to just start over again with the new ordinance at first reading, that can always be done at any time.
By who?
Well, it's gonna be up to the commission to decide whether or not you wanna have it.
So I'm trying to explain to you that on the south side. If you wanna bring it back, you can bring it back.
I mean, know what you're doing.
We, I know exactly what I'm doing, I know exactly what you're trying to bully people to do what you want them to do.
Listen, the bully is the one who accuses people of bullying.
Oh, okay. That's the one who's beating up the person next to him. Oh, you're gonna think about bringing it back? Oh my god.
I just made it clear that she can bring it back whenever she wants. And just because you didn't know that, don't get all the...
I do know that. I do know that.
Just relax.
I do know that.
You can bring this back if you want to, next meeting, but two meetings from now. Just relax down there.
Alright, to make life simple, because for once, I misunderstood the vote, thinking I could then make something. I should have then amended what he was doing when he did it, obviously. I wish I did before too, because I didn't realize. I'm gonna go to bring it back, if it fails, it fails, but that way I don't have to worry about another time or the next meeting. So I'm gonna make a motion to bring it back, but hold on doing anything for at least, table it for six months. So that the workshops and all the other things can be gathered and police chief would want to get up, say something, do whatever.
Make it clean.
If you vote to bring it back, the ordinance wouldn't take effect for six months. So even if, like Commissioner Simone said, some of us wanna rush to do it, we couldn't anyways because the ordinance doesn't even take effect
Correct.
For somewhere, a certain amount of time. And then we would still have to have a workshop, go out to bid, bring in the companies, compare, compare apples to apples.
Or not, or not bring them together.
After, after, well, this is the ordinance. The next step would be to, if, if you're gonna enact that, the companies come in, at that time the police can say, yes, we like this, no, we don't, or we like it if it's this company because of this technology or this method or practice.
But right now, there's nothing in here that hires anyone. It simply puts something in place if at some time someone wants to bring up doing that.
Exactly. So, so... It could never be brought up, it might never be brought up.
That's true.
But at least we could.
So if, if, what you're describing would be a two-step process. Um, you would first need to have a motion to reconsider
Okay.
the, the vote that was taken on second reading. If the motion to reconsider passes, then the second reading is back on the table. Um, and at that point in time, if you wanted to amend the ordinance to change the effective date, you can amend the ordinance and then you would have another vote on the amended ordinance at second reading. But the first step in the process is that you need to have a motion. Somebody who's on the prevailing side needs to make a motion to reconsider either tonight or at your next meeting. But David, that can be done later as well, you can make them...
You can start all over.
Well, exactly, you're just starting all over.
Correct.
But to bring it back is basically insinuating that there's a reason you're bringing it back, it passed it.
No, I'm not bringing it back to pass it, I'm bringing it back simply because it asks, it says here, I would recommend this either a table or a holding for six months and setting a timeframe to gather more information, hold workshop, add or evaluate programs, results from other cities who have implemented it. That's, simply because that's what it says here, and I read it today, and I didn't think that was a bad option.
You also read the part where the police said that they were in favor of it, or what did that, they didn't think it would help speeding? You read that too, right?
Yeah, I did.
So you was gonna pick what you want.
But this has to do with seeing what other cities say. It's not about whether...
I, I can probably guarantee that City of Coconut Creek won't have these cameras installed within a few months.
Okay, so...
So why would you wait till the six months, bring this back as a clean ordinance? And then go from there? Why would you, why would you want to bring it back right now? If you voted no on, I'm just asking you, what the rationale is?
The rationale simply was that I shouldn't have amended it when he did it, and I voted, made a mistake with the vote, quite frankly. Because I would have rather have voted on whether or not we were gonna table or wait six months. If that had failed, that's one thing. But I would, I should have added it onto there, correct, Mr. Thompsons? I should have amended it, and it...
If you, if you wanted to amend the effective...
We could do that right away, please.
And I should have done that thing, which is why I misunderstood, which I rarely ever do, I'm just saying.
So, in, in order to have any present discussion on this item, you'd need to make a motion to reconsider the vote on second reading. That, that motion needs to be seconded and voted on.
Kind of a listen to this.
Or it could come back next month by another commissioner and start the process all over again.
But why would you want, I mean...
I wouldn't want it.
If you make the motion, I'll second it.
That's why I don't understand why you voted no, but now you wanna bring it back.
I'll make the motion, I'll second the motion if you bring it back.
I, I don't understand that, I mean, you, you voted no on something, but David, you're gonna bring it back.
I'll bring it back.
Because I should have amended it to start with, for there to be a trial.
So it's, so you are in favor of this?
Make the motion seconded.
No, I'm sure we're doing the workshop and all the things that it says in here, which we will not do otherwise if you kill it now. You will not have, there's no reason to have a workshop if you kill it.
You can always bring it back next month as a...
Make the motion and I'll second it.
You're gonna get your motion, relax down there.
Why would you do that? I simply want the workshop.
What, what, what more information do you want from the workshop? I mean...
I want, I would have expected a tremendous outpouring of people here.
Well, you had over three hundred comments, four hundred comments. They don't care, I guess it don't matter.
Yeah, but they assumed that it had passed, that it had not, and you know that's true. The first reading had passed, nothing else had passed. And so, I for the first time ever put something out there to explain, no, nobody did anything other than open it up for a second reading, which I...
Okay, so let me clarify something. So right now, it did pass, correct? It didn't pass?
It had, well, now...
It didn't pass, so right now, it's safe to say, it's safe, it's safe to say right now on social media that it passed?
No, no, it didn't happen.
No, it didn't pass.
Didn't happen.
It didn't pass by a vote of three to two, however, a commissioner brought it back to reconsider. It's safe to say?
You're a bully.
Yeah, you're a bully.
I'm a bully. Listen, one thing I've never been wrong. They might, as a bully, because I protect their opinions, but...
You know, I'm gonna make life simple.
When people don't get what they want, and sit on the end, sitting there crying, and make faces, and throw their hands up, those are the people you gotta watch out for.
You're the one who's turning red because you can't get people to do what you want.
I'm turning red because I'm laughing, if she wants to change it, that's fine, but you're the bully.
Then let her change it then, stop bullying.
I'm gonna make life simple tonight. I'm gonna wait till next week to decide to bring this back, so we can end this now.
So you do wanna bring it back?
I'm gonna think of that. I wanted to do it before, Tommy, but I'm not gonna have this nonsense back and forth.
They just make the motion.
But the nonsense is being created because you're not sure if you wanna do this or not do this.
No, I was, had I done it right, I would have amended his motion to allow for it to pass, but be on hold for six months or table it for six months. But I did for it, I didn't do that.
Okay.
I made a mistake.
So that's the city manager's recommendation?
Correct.
Okay. Just be clear.
Correct. He's given us two things, that if, that he would recommend a minimum of six-month hold period if we favor the adoption, or he would recommend a six-month table it.
So, with all due respect, and I know the mayor and I are on different sides of this, but with respect...
Why don't they, I expect people will...
But, but, but with respect to his comment, I mean, make a decision tonight, if you're gonna bring it back, let's do it tonight.
That, that's what I'm saying.
And then I'll do that vote, and, and we'll, we'll delay it for, to take effect for six months so that we can follow the recommendation and a certain...
And if no one ever chooses to bring it back, then it doesn't work.
Or, or don't, but don't, don't...
No, it is complex.
Well, I might bring it back, I might not bring it, let's, let's...
I respect that, so do Antonio. Being transparent and being honest.
That's exactly what I...
So you wanna bring it back, bring it back. Didn't say it.
That's what I said.
If you two would stop arguing, I would have done it twenty minutes ago. So now, I will, I'm the prevailing side, I would like to bring this back, to allow it to have the workshops and whatever, and to table it for six months, and if nobody chooses, whatever six months is, to bring it back, it will have to come back at the table, and if you choose not to vote for it, then you kill it.
So we have to vote, we have to vote to bring it back.
So, so if you, if you wanna bring it back, you need to make a motion to reconsider.
I'm making a motion to reconsider.
Second. Okay, alright, so currently...
This is what he said in the beginning.
Alright, so, um, Mr. Mayor, right now you have a motion made by Vice Mayor Forrest saying to reconsider the vote on second reading. Not, I mean, it's, it's not debatable, no color coming. Commissioner Simone?
Why do you want a workshop? To learn what? What don't we know that you want a workshop?
We don't know a damn thing. We don't have a clue how the courts anywhere else. We don't have a clue about anything, and quite frankly, this is not about money. You have never seen me ask for anything that doesn't do education. I've never asked for anybody to be tagged with anything in their, in their, where they live. I simply ask to educate the public.
The, the workshop, I, I think some of us are getting confused. This is just the ordinance to allow the cameras. We may not ever do that.
Well, maybe, this is my...
The workshop was, the workshop was to address a couple of things. One, six months from now, see what's going on with other cities.
Correct.
Is it successful, is it not a people challenge?
Do you think, do you think six months is really long enough? I don't even think it's long enough.
Well, school would wanna do that in session, so yet, I think six months is more, is fine enough time. It's either gonna be during the time of school session or not. It doesn't matter now in June, it doesn't matter until March.
If I could finish though, it was about, it was to, to see that, see what's going on with the courts. Does the state make amendments to the law? The company...
I don't think that's gonna happen in six months.
The company, we don't have to have it in six months.
Yeah, maybe, yes.
All, all, all I'm saying, if it, the motion to reconsider, I'm assuming that's gonna pass, I will make a motion to pass the ordinance effective six months from now. But we could have a workshop in a year, two years, whenever the commission decides to have a workshop. Again, to see the other cities, the companies, if, listen, I know sometimes some, some of you guys meet with people, don't meet with... I meet with everybody, if I like it, I tell them yes, if I don't, I tell them no. But I know that each company has a different procedure. Some are pretty legit and have got great technology, and others are creating the company in their garage overnight and trying to bid cities for it. It's to bring in the top three, top four people, compare apples to apples. Do they charge to install? Do they not? Do they charge if we cancel? How, what type of technology? That, that's what the workshop's for. This is just about the ordinance. That's just like, if the city passes an ordinance to go align with the state to say that you can't sleep in public for homeless, doesn't mean we're gonna go and round up every homeless person and arrest them, but we could. That's all this is saying, is we could enact the cameras if, if we choose to. That's all this is. All this overthinking about how fast, or the signs, or what if, and they're good questions. But that's not what this is about tonight, this is just about the ordinance.
This, this is definitely moving forward, putting cameras in.
I'm not committed to putting cameras in.
But then, then don't go down the ordinance. That's what I don't understand, why would you go...
Then why put it on to start with? So the, why ever put it on the agenda to start with? I had asked for it.
Because a commissioner asked, looked into this, and he looked into it, and it was brought up. If you wanted me to be the type of mayor that won't always put things on when asked to, I could do that.
That's fine, that's how it wound up there.
Guys, the way the agenda is set, is I look at it, if I don't want something on there, it won't go on there. I've had it where I've wanted something on in the past, and I never got it put on. I probably want it, but I know that allows it. Only because, in the past, I've not had things on there. So you asked, why was it put on? It was put on because the commissioner...
Alright, so somebody, now I know. Because otherwise, because it showed...
It wasn't put on by the city. We discussed this last meeting, and every, Arlene, every answer you're giving is contradicting to what you said last week. Every one.
All I said last week is I thought it should have coins.
You said there were major accidents, there weren't.
I, well, I remember now, I know it's not in the time zone, I remember getting things.
Okay, you said that you wanted to wait till Coconut Creek, which is...
Well, and now apparently plantation.
Have you called Coconut Creek and asked them how they...
It says the plantation has not selected a vendor.
Oh, you haven't spoke to the police department, you...
I'm gonna make him very happy.
You don't have to, I wouldn't put it on, I mean, it's a redirection in there, Arlene.
You've asked me twelve times, and I've asked the police department, so now I'm gonna ask the police department.
You don't have to be so specific, but come by, you know, the red light camera companies you've met, were they friendly, were they good, were they... Just be honest.
School zone, Major Strant, and I'm always speaking about the chief because I was the one who met with all the companies. I'm the one that's dealing with this. So if there's anything I can help clarify, please ask. Um, as far as change of behavior in school zones, the number one thing you're gonna get to change behavior, in my opinion, and this is somebody who's got the majority of his career in traffic, um, as a motorcycle officer, as a supervisor of the unit, and now a major that the unit calls on. Um, the number one thing you're gonna get to change behavior is prison officer in school zones. Um, seeing us out there every day will change behavior. Uh, is it saying that the cameras aren't going to? No, because every company has said, at some point, eighty percent of behavior will change because people are gonna get tired of getting the tickets. At the same time, um... This is Broward County. There is speeding everywhere. We are never going to get a one hundred percent solving of the speeding issue anywhere.
No.
Um... If you guys decide to do the cameras, then you do the cameras. Would I rather get back our staffing levels so I can put two more people in the traffic unit to help? Because our traffic unit is growing very thin. Not only they do traffic, they cover for the SROs if the SROs are not in school for the day. They're helping with police issues, they are helping road patrol. So they're pulled all over the place. So if you don't see one in a school zone, it's because they're constantly doing something else. Um, if you want our traffic officers in the school zones, come the first day of school and assign there every single day with no other duty, I'll make sure it happens.
I have a question. And I don't, I don't disagree. And I said this at the beginning of my comments tonight, that this is not in lieu of my police officer. The cameras will generate enough revenue that we could fill your staffing levels. So to me, why not have, yes, it is to some extent, there is, there is money from it, okay? For someone who's speeding in a school zone. It would pay for probably ten more police officers, and you could put five of them out in school zones. Going back to my days when I used to speed, I saw a cop on the side of the road who pulled someone over, I'd go faster because I know that they're not gonna pull me over. Again, only two hundred thirteen tickets were issued last year. I don't see that number drastically going up unless we have cameras. But the revenue produced from it, which isn't gonna go to like decorating city hall, it has to go to public safety. It could be used to put on more police officers, could it not? Well, it has to go to public safety.
But it's gonna, it's going to end up being a lot of money. I mean, you saw the things, it's a lot of money. And you know, there's been terms thrown around as far as school safety, money grabs, things like that. Let me tell you where I have the issue with this entire program. One, I think it should never replace the officers because I think they might have more of an impact. Two, if this was all about the school safety in the school zone, these cameras would run while those lights are flashing. The problem I have with these cameras is the middle ground of the day. These, this, that house bill states that you can turn these cameras on a half hour before the light starts in the morning for arrival and breakfast programs, and let them run the entire day till a half hour after and the school sessions are, are finished.
Okay.
So, while the school is on, which is when the kids are walking to school, parents are dropping off, it's fifteen miles an hour. So at twenty-six miles an hour, you can get a citation. When the light turns off at the end of the school zone, the cameras then start writing tickets at forty-six miles an hour.
But, not to interrupt, the cities can set that threshold.
They can.
And I even, on the record, have said, I would not set it that low. I would set it to make sure you're talking about people drag racing, going twenty, you know, class hours.
You have, you have, remember in light, to, all of these, these companies. Now, all the companies said there is zero cost to install these. Where things vary is where I, you know, and this is where you need to have a workshop with each company, is there's little differences in them. Um, if you cancel a contract for whatever reason, the thing you might end up paying for the cameras, you know, after the fact, uh, and everything's on a five-year term with these, uh, companies. They're not gonna wanna set it too high because they are businesses. This is a money maker for them as well. They're not gonna want you to say, hey, we want you to run these things at, you know, eleven P M on Atlantic Boulevard, and set the speed limit on the cameras to sixty-five and only get the agreed to speed or so. Because ultimately, they're losing money in this as well. They're gonna want you to set it supposed to forty-six miles an hour. And I'll tell you something right now, every one of us works in market, lives in market, drives through market. Everybody in this room is gonna get a ticket on Atlantic Boulevard at forty-six miles an hour. Every one of us.
I wouldn't set it that low. And, and...
But what I'm saying is you can, the house bill allows it.
Right, the house bills allows it, but we set the rules. And being, uh, before I was elected, I worked for a company that sold to law enforcement. It was an innovative technology, and when these type of companies, which is what I see them as, they will do what, look, if we're the city that waits two, three years to do it, yes, we're gonna be very simple with the contract. You're an innovator, I'm telling you right now, we would be able to set the rules just to what we want. There's no way they're gonna turn, because they want them so bad. There's no way that they would turn it down if we wanted the second reading.
All depending on what, I think, who set that speed limit. I don't think they're going to agree, and I could be wrong.
Then we send them, then, then we say we don't do it.
If we don't do it.
But it's two different things. Right now, we're just talking about having the option to do it. The second step would be looking at the companies.
Yes, and, and, and I, I understand that. Like, I know the ordinance doesn't put, put a company in here and this goes to installing cameras. Um, regardless of this, this ordinance, I still suggest, um, you have the workshop and let all, at least four of the, the four companies I had come in and present to you. But like I said, if the whole school save, I mean, I'm not a fan of these. I mean, this has red light camera written all over it. To me, now granted, there's been a lot of things done for these as far as the house bill being written that the red light cameras didn't have. I know they've been up in Georgia, Georgia's a different state, different rules and laws. I still think they're gonna see challenges. Um, it's just the way it is, people are going to challenges, the nature of attorneys. I don't know where it's gonna go, how much it's gonna tie up like the red light cameras did, but that's why I, if you are set on doing this, six months, a year, whatever, let other cities do it. Other cities that are, are gung ho on doing this.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
Other cities that are gung ho on doing this, might not have had the red light cameras and don't know what we went through. You know, and this, this program, and as we're short-staffed, and I would love to put more traffic officers in, is going to be very labor-intensive, we're going to have to hire somebody just to run this program. It's very labor-intensive. There's gonna be a lot of violations. Every one of them has to be reviewed by an officer.
So like you're saying, there's gonna be a lot, there's gonna be a lot of speeders who'll play.
What do you set the, what do you set the speed limit at?
I set forty-seven.
For my...
Forty-seven in a change.
Five, and twenty-seven in change when it's fifteen? Well, it has to be eleven over by the...
Minimum stuff.
Oh. Yes.
So it's a minimum of forty-six or, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-six, and I don't have a problem with it being forty-seven or twenty-seven.
But it's also, to me, and I'm playing devil's advocate, it's gonna cost more to put more officers on the road.
Yeah.
The, the, the speeders, the speeders are gonna pay for that one or two people to be the reviewer. Plus, they could pay to, put, how many traffic, do you have now?
Four.
We could probably have seven or eight traffic people with the...
That's since they needed.
Right, well, the cameras, because I don't, I, I'm, you know, I'm not gonna say the word the cameras anymore. The speeders are gonna pay...
That's right.
To have a person review a ticket.
Some of the speeders are...
The speeders are gonna pay... The speeders are gonna pay to staff your department with more people. The speeders are gonna pay to help put a third person on a fire engines.
Yes, unfortunately, depending on what you set that speed at, everyone's going to do that.
It's just like with the compensated funds that we use.
Everybody.
We, we spend forty, fifty thousand every year on a national night out. That comes from confiscated funds, the criminals are paying for it, same concept here.
Yes. I'm not disagreeing with it, it's a, it's a, an enormous money maker. Those, those studies that were given are, are...
Right.
It's an enormous revenue generator.
And you know, you're gonna slow down speeding one I R.
Of course it's gonna slow down speeding and I R because the company state, they, people are gonna get tired of getting tickets.
I agree, and then, and then...
So, but it's not going to pure, we don't have an issue speeding in our school zones when the lights are flashing. From somebody who has stood in the school zones countless times, I will tell you, we don't have an issue when those lights are flashing in our school zones. Now, when it's schools in session at eleven P M on that school day, when these cameras are still rolling, you're gonna get them all day. All day. As somebody who sat on a motorcycle for five years, I will tell you that my speed on Atlantic, before I even pulled out to talk to somebody, was at least fifty, and I could write tickets all day long if I wanted to. So yes, it's, you're going to get, you're gonna get a lot of tickets, and it's going to generate a lot of revenue. And what it does, whether it goes to the officers, the fire department. Okay. But I still say, I would love, you know, officers standing in the school zones are the biggest deterrent.
But I think we all agree with that, but you can't manufacture what you don't have, right? But I, I, but I gotta hear, tell ya, I listened to you say that people are gonna get tickets all day long, so we should do nothing about it. And that just drives me crazy because if someone who drives that street twenty times a day and gets people cutting me off or going around me when the light is not even there.
It's not that we shouldn't do anything about it, I'm just trying to look at something more reasonable. You know, really, really sad, we already said that the, the speed limit in Atlantic is forty-five. So if you're, I'm sorry, I'm just...
No, it's thirty-five.
The speed limit through Coral Springs.
It's forty-five because they come right across.
So people doing forty-eight.
Sixty-five.
Forty-eight, are they speeding?
Yeah.
They are, but they can't get a citation by state statute, you have to be at least six over. Or have a current state session.
That's what I'm saying, no one's gonna, it's not a gotcha.
Well, if you stay, but my, but my point is, if you stay at forty-seven miles an hour driving from your house in Springs to get to work in Pomona, and you stay at forty-seven, you come through market, those two school zones, you're getting a ticket.
I have no problem with Coral Springs people paying for our extra police officers.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that either. I think that's a harmless idea.
But it's not a money grab.
People will stop speeding.
People will stop speeding. Isn't that, you were talking about, this is all about safety. This is all about getting people slowed down.
No, not in the school zone. It's not.
Oh, okay.
We want to speed down the school zones.
Well, I, I'll just finish, I'll just finish with the people yelling out in the crowd that we can hire four more officers that can go ticket all. You could pick the streets. Where do you want on the ticket? They'll go. We'll have the officers and the funds to do it.
We've been telling you that.
Alright, hold on.
We don't have money. That's why we're up here and we're not. Because you can't just spit things out and they go, oh, loosen this, and you have candidates coming up here talking with no solution. Come up with a solution. Know what you're actually talking about.
Know what you're talking about.
Hold on, hold on, please.
I do. And you give the numbers. Don't lie.
Commissioner Suma.
Run against me, you can sit up here.
No thanks.
Hold on, guys.
It just amazes me that we asked Major to come up and give his opinion and yet we're arguing with him for his, for his.
He's giving it on the company, but we're talking about the ordinance.
And he'd love to have more officers. He'd love to have more money to pay him.
Well, we, we, Marty Killebe came up here and said that we got three million dollars more for our property tax. There you go. There's three million dollars right there.
Inflation, the cost of everything's gone up.
And we only did twenty-five cents on every dollar.
Can you let, can you let the lady speak without body manner?
But it just amazes me how you asked him to come up and give his opinion. He's given his opinion and you sit up here and you argue with him for his opinion. It's, this is ludicrous.
What's his solution?
Well, then let them speed.
Now, you know what, you guys? This all goes back to speeding. It starts with the school, because of kids, then it goes to speeding, and then it goes to the money. Basically, what I've been hearing tonight is it's okay to drive forty-five miles per hour on Atlantic Boulevard. That's what I've added as a majority of commissioners. You guys are okay to drive forty-five. You guys are okay to break the law.
No, we're okay with that, but no.
No, 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 but you're saying.
And they said they can't pull you over unless you're doing it in six months.
But you're saying, there's a reason why you can't set these cameras less than that because there would be more money coming in. They make this very enticing for people, very enticing. You just heard what our profession said, respect them. That's all.
Yeah, but we've heard things in the past about fine ways to, we don't wanna raise taxes, we don't wanna add fees, we want all these extra services.
Antonio, this has never really been brought up as an issue until a camera company got involved. If you guys were so adamant about speeding in the speed zone, go into the chief. So you know what? I had a guy there all day writing tickets. And that's what this is all about. But we just heard it's all about safety. But yet, during school, when kids are in there, there's no safety issues.
Do we have a motion?
It's not a safety issue. It's a money grab, and that's exactly what this is.
That's a.
You know, I appreciate you, Major, walking the thin line here, but, uh.
Do we have a vote for a rebranding act?
I'm speaking, so relax. So I appreciate you coming up and I appreciate your experience and and your knowledge of it. But to ask that you want more knowledge, more public meetings and stuff like that, it's your, your entitled to do that. I just want you to do that.
Can I ask you something? Who sets the thirty-five mile an hour in Margate?
Uh, we don't know.
Who sets the forty-five mile an hour in Coral Springs when half of the lights are?
Same thing.
How is that even something that we don't have a problem with?
Well, it's not.
Is Atlantic Boulevard in Coral Springs any different than Atlantic Boulevard in Margate?
No, I mean, you'd have to look at where, like down by, down.
It it goes back to forty-five to tomorrow.
It goes forty-five, uh, you know, it's forty further west on Atlantic. It changes. And it changes because you get into residential areas, whereas when it's forty-five coming through there, um, it's most likely because there's no, um, direct driveways out. It's, you have the car dealerships. You have the communities that are set by the lights.
Who's not a school? You realize that? You realize that, uh, Rambowood Niss is sitting right there and yet it's forty-five here?
Yes, but the school zone is still fifteen when it's flashing.
To me, it is all about people not speeding. It's not about the money, never has been. When Erin Young worked here, she would sit on her motorcycle on Atlantic Boulevard, no matter what time during the school flashing light time, people were pulled over. I don't know if that still happens because we may have had more people working for us than we do now. When, no, tips is right there. I can remember going back, how many motorcycle people would sit there. I'm sure I saw you there at some time too. We don't seem to have that amount of people anymore or dedicated officers to just sit there during the time when the flashing lights are. There was always the motorcycle cops, because I assume they moved a lot faster. Do, we don't have that, correct?
Because we're having, because we have personnel issues.
Correct.
We need to hire additional people.
Correct. But it's not because anybody said don't hire, it's simply because there's a scarcity of people coming out and I guess a ton of people bidding for wherever they go. But not because we said don't hire those people.
No, we have the vacant spots. It was just hard to keep up with, whether it's retention or hiring.
Right. Correct. Right, so it's not that anybody's looking to replace an officer. I just wanna see people learn not to speed down that area. And no, I don't think a thirty-five doing fifty in a thirty-five is okay. I don't think it's okay. It's not okay in other cities. It shouldn't be okay here. But the idea that it goes from forty-five a block from my house, less than a block, a traffic light from my house to thirty-five is something always questioned. It's because they come across and probably don't see our signs. I know where our signs are. I know where their signs are. I was just looking for a way to change people's behavior. And not to say it's acceptable to do this regardless of the time of day it is.
I'll I'll tell you what, what, you know, the red light cameras came and went, but while they were there, I think I got two of them. After the second one, I was over, I stopped, I checked, I made sure. It definitely changed my drive of habits.
Me too.
And I deserved them.
They will, but realize these cameras only run the hundred days. It was hundred eighty days of the school calendar, so.
Correct.
So right now, this is all, this is all.
Yeah, they're all.
Cameras. Right.
Right.
Uh, Commissioner Suma.
I thank you though. I do appreciate.
So I think we should put up more lights if we can along the sides of the roads, uh, make them very visible. And I don't think you need an officer there every single day. I think if you have enough officers out there frequently, then it's gonna change people's behaviors. I don't think we need somebody sitting there every single day or many officers sitting every single day. But if people see officers out there quite frequently, it's gonna change people's behaviors. I know on Riverside Drive, it used to be forty mile an hour speed limit. When they redid the road, they dropped it down to thirty-five. And I'll tell you what. I make sure that I look at my speedometer when I'm on that road now because I've seen so many people uh, get pulled over on that road that I know not to go over thirty-five on that road.
And if the cameras that are giving every speeder a ticket, when the officers pull over on the side of the road and someone speeds by, they don't get a ticket, the camera doesn't?
I can't see anybody. I would never speed by some, an officer giving somebody, nor would I.
I've had officers tell me that they can't, that people speed by them while they're in their car.
Well, you know what? Sometimes they have two officers. I've seen that too. They'll have one there, they'll pull somebody over and then the car whiz by and guess what? A block down the road, there's another officer sitting there.
We have officers there very frequently and we have a speeding problem based on the studies. So I don't understand if the cameras in there.
Based on their studies.
The police do.
Yeah.
Am I pressing or are you relying on me?
No, they were, were.
I don't.
Right now.
Motion to reconsider.
Right now, it's pending as a motion to reconsider the vote on the second reading.
Alright.
Okay, I don't know why you did this. Okay.
I got everyone back up to vote?
No, no, it's not a poll up to. Okay. Motion now to bring back the ordinance. Overall.
Mr. Cagiano?
Yes.
Mr. Simone?
No.
Mr. Oserio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz? Mayor Arizona?
No, alright, so now, so now, now the ordinance in second reading is back on the table.
Okay, I.
Now you have to decide what you want to do.
So what I will do is I will make a motion to approve the ordinance, the issue at hand, not accompany the ordinance, and I'll make it effective six months from now.
Effective in that we can look at it again?
Well, the ordinance, if it passes, it passes.
Right.
It's just not gonna kick in for six months from now. And even if we wanted to have cameras, we'd still have to go off the bid, have a selection, have a workshop to bring in a company. But to, but to to quell off any concern that this is being pushed on, even if I wanna do this tomorrow, I gotta wait six months.
Also, so, so just for the record, the effective date in section six of the ordinance would be, uh, July or January third, twenty twenty.
Right after the first of the year, perfect.
January third. Twenty twenty-five.
And that would read back to?
That would be, the ordinance would go into effect, which would then give the city commission the ability to hire a company to install.
Can I ask you down hypothetical?
Okay.
Sure. If there's an election and there's a, a new commissioner, can they bring this item up to reconsider it to be voided?
Well, the commission can always bring back an ordinance.
Yeah, they could do that or they could just not vote. They cannot vote on it if a company comes up.
But you're saying that it, right now, if we vote, it's gonna pass? I don't know. No, 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 okay, okay. If we vote on it and it passes. It won't go into effect. It won't go into effect, but the ordinance will still be there. The ordinance will still be there, but it won't be effective until January third, twenty twenty-five.
And the commissioners would still have to pick a company.
So can it, the commission at that point, before, you remove the ordinance? Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So now I have a question. I would prefer to see it tabled as opposed to automatically gone back for the six months.
Alright, so.
Because that was the second choice there. That was the one I would have gone for to start with.
Alright, so right now you have a motion to approve the ordinance on second reading with the amendment to the effective date.
So now I can make a motion, I can amend that to table.
You can, you can make, you can make a motion to table that. You can make a motion to table that motion.
And that's all I ever wanted to do to start with.
Till when? Till when?
I don't care. It's nine months. As long as I get to see what other people are doing.
I need a date. I just.
That's it.
You want nine months? You want nine months? So that would be every March or April, April twenty twenty-five.
Which would give us a whole year for school to be in and almost out by that point.
So right now.
That's all. It's all I would have done to start with.
Alright, so the vice mayor's made a motion to table the item till April twenty twenty-five. Is there a second one?
Yeah, but we already have a motion.
I know, I amended it.
She's making a motion to table the, the vote on the second reading of the ordinance. I will vote to second it, to table it, just so it isn't approved.
Before the order, we already have a motion and a second.
Yeah, but she, she asked for a table. She's, she's.
I amended it.
Yeah, but only if the vote person makes the motion accepts the amendment.
No, no, she's doing it, she's tabling the vote on that motion, the consideration of the ordinance.
No. But which now you don't have, you can't discuss because.
So you have, so you have a motion to table till April twenty twenty-five and seconded by the mayor.
But then you have a whole year.
And there's no, no discussion.
Or you could just pass the ordinance and then.
I didn't wanna do that to start with. I wanted to table it.
Jen, go.
We've done that twenty hours ago.
It's a game show.
Mr. Cagiano?
No.
Mr. Simone?
No.
Mr. Oserio?
So I can be on the prevailing side just to make sure? I'll say yes to table it.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Arizona?
It's a chess game.
Yeah, but at least I, at least I know what I'm doing though.
Do you? So we table it, it doesn't pass, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And if I don't table it, it's gonna come back and it's probably gonna pass.
Correct.
Okay, so I will.
Can I change my vote? I would love to do it.
Sure, sure.
Mr.?
Alright, could you recall the vote, Jen? Recall it?
Mr. Cagiano?
It's not a motion to table.
No.
Okay.
To Mr. Simone?
Yes.
To Mr. Oserio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Arizona?
And this is what I asked for last meeting. Yes, okay.
So is everyone sure now?
So the second, so the second reading of this ordinance with the amended effective date of six months out has been tabled till April twenty twenty-five. Okay, if there's no one in front of the discussion, make sure you all attend the longest running parade fireworks show in South Florida. Tomorrow morning, nine AM. Don't miss it. At nine PM will be the fireworks. God bless. Have a great evening.